Okay. Good morning, and welcome to this special meeting of the Audit Committee. Roll call please.
Audit Committee member Richard Corel.
Here.
Ed Chachadurian.
Here.
Alex Parahon.
Here.
Tom O'Shaughnessy.
Present.
Audit Committee Chair Zari Amirian.
Present. Let's go to the business agenda, please.
Business agenda, item number two. The agenda for the Audit Committee meeting of today, April 17, 2017, was posted on Thursday, April 13, 2017, on the bulletin board outside of City Hall.
Okay. Next item, oral communications. I have no cards in front of me. Let's move on to item number four, please.
Item number four is approval of minutes. Minutes of the Audit Committee meeting held on Monday, January 23, 2017.
I will entertain any notions regarding item number four.
Adoption is permitted. I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Audit Committee member Richard Corel.
Approved.
Ed Chachadurian.
Yes.
Alex Parahon.
Approved.
Tom O'Shaughnessy.
Affirmative.
And Chair Zari Amirian.
Yes. Item number five, we have no action items. Let's move on to item number six, please.
Number six is reports and information. Internal Audit Activity Report as of March 31, 2017. Jesse Zhang, Acting Internal Audit Manager.
Apologize for the technical difficulties. So, just in a quick recap, we did take roll call. The business agenda was read. There were no oral communications. Minutes were approved unanimously. There were no action items. And now, let's move on to item number six. Please.
I'll read item number six. Internal Audit Activity Report as of March 31, 2017. Jesse Zhang, Acting Internal Audit Manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and committee members. My name is Jesse Zhang, Acting Internal Audit Manager for the Internal Audit Division. This morning, I would like to provide you a report on the internal audit activities for the quarter ended March 31, 2017. Within your handout, there is the activity report, so please feel free to follow along if you'd like. There are four topics I would like to cover for this report. The completed project, the projects that are currently in progress, quarterly follow-up, and ongoing team assignments. So during this past quarter, we issued one report, which is the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Financial Ratio calculation. This is considered a added, a value-added project. We have been providing these services to the Community Services and Parks Department for the past six years. So now, I would like to provide you a high-level overview of this project. The objective of this project was to provide CDBG Advisory Committee with an additional tool to utilize while evaluating funding decision for the current year. The scope of this project focused on calculating six predetermined financial ratio on each of the CDBG applicant's latest financial statements. These financial statements were provided to us by the department staff. The ratio computation was performed by Eileen Donahue, our former internal audit manager, and then they also reviewed by our senior internal auditor, Natalie Minami Valdivia. The report was issued to the department on February 9. So in addition to issuing the report and providing ratio calculation details to the department, internal audit also conducted a PowerPoint presentation at the CDBG Advisory Committee meeting on February 24. So at the presentation, internal audit provided an overview of the report and highlighted three areas, basically to cover what we did, what our report provides, and what the report does not provide. So, in summary, so internal audit calculated six financial ratios for the 11 CDBG community agency applicants, and no additional audit procedures were performed by internal audit. And the ratio calculation are meant as an additional tool, and the internal audit does not express an opinion on the financial health of the agency requesting funding. So as a refresher, to the committee members, we went over each of the financial ratios, the descriptive information, the formulas used to compute the ratios, and the meaning of each ratio. So, then the committee members also reminded that the ratio should not be reviewed on a standalone basis. It should be evaluated in comparison with others in the same industry or from year to year. So that is a brief summary of this project. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. We also have representative from the department join us this morning to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, actually. About how many hours does this particular audit, or this particular, yeah, audit report take for the audit function for the city?
For, so if you see, there's a table under the completed projects. There's budgeted hours and actual hours. Is that what you are asking?
Oh, yeah. Wonderful. And then, and then I had just a quick question. Does the amount of time that we spend on this, do we see, do we feel that there's value for that?
I think to answer that question, I would like to invite the representative from the department.
Great, let's do that.
I think the value's in that.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee. Moises Correio, Community Services and Parks. To answer the chair's question, we do see a lot of value, of course, in this. In the last, I believe, six years, we've had this audit review by our internal audit to review the financial statements of our nonprofits. These are agencies that are applying for federal funds, and we need to be very careful who we fund and how funds are distributed. So, it does play an important part in our overall process of financial stability of our agencies, especially with funds being very watched very carefully by the, by our HUD funding source. So, it does, it does help us quite a bit.
What are the total amount of the funds that are being looked at, being distributed for these agencies right now?
Mr. Chair, for the RFP, we RFP at approximately $400, $660,000, so?
That's, that's social and capital combined?
Correct. That's social and capital. So you're getting about 15 to 18 proposals. Some of those are, of course, repeat agencies. Some are having social and capital projects submitted. So we're looking at, I believe, this year, about 11 or 12 financial audits. Again, these are a lot of repeats, so we see the same numbers, but it's good to see here by your comparisons as well.
Okay. That's all I have.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Two questions. One, this audit is not necessarily required by the federal government, per se. It's, it's an audit that we, as a city, conducted to kind of drill down and understand value and impact a bit better in spending. So that's more of a statement, I guess, than a question, but just to make sure I'm on the same page. And my actual question is, sort of in light of the fact that these funds come from the federal government, are there any, does the city, or maybe this might not be your department, but does the city have any sort of proactive plans in terms of taking these numbers, taking these findings, and articulating them to the federal government in terms of sort of either advocating for the continuation of these funds and/or increasing funds simply because we can speak, I guess, with maybe more authority or more effectiveness in terms of how we, as a city, utilize these funds and maybe our ability to be more deserving in some ways because of this information? Sorry, that was a long question.
Well, I'll try to answer the first question. It's not a federal requirement to have a internal audit review of financial statements. Certainly, it's a HUD, good practice of internal controls to review audits from the nonprofits, but we're not essentially financial analysts, so it's great to have a team with internal audit to review these financial statements. So it does, it does lie in the federal government's internal control systems. The second part is, we don't take this information outside of the city and the nonprofits to get this information. It's necessarily shared with the federal government or HUD, but it's a good, it is good practice to show them, once we, they review these audits, to show we're doing a lot more than just receiving them and filing them. So, but it doesn't get outside, and it doesn't necessarily go with advocacy or education for funding. But it does show stability, does show that we're not having any issues with any of our nonprofits, which means we wouldn't have, well, the outside auditors, which is called OIG, Office of Internal General's Office, come in. So been very, very good in having this, this type of audit review for us.
Moises, I have a question for you. There's 11 organizations here, and I'm assuming handful actually apply for these type of funding. So what's your criteria as to, because you said that these are basically regular organizations that you actually fund year-to-year basis. So what about other ones, new ones that come on board, and so forth? What's the criteria of your department to determine which one gets funding and what and how much?
Well, these are actually all the participants who did apply. I believe there was about 15 or 18. Two did not receive funding, but again, we're looking at agencies that apply for both capital. Our criteria is based not only financially, but it's based on program, it's based on activities that they're providing, their interviews. So there's a lot more weight in the other side of things, which is program, program outcomes, program numbers, their ability to state states their needs. So it's a little different. It's not just financial. So a lot of them are graded on that basis, along with financial. So just one of, I believe, six criteria we have for, for an agency to receive funds. And they are vetted by the CDBG Advisory Committee, which in the past has gone through an interview process with them.
Couple of questions. In the six years, have you seen a shift in the fabric of the type of programs that are approaching you? Given that in the last six years, we've received a heightened emphasis in affordable housing, veterans, things like that?
That's a very good question. Actually, we have tied in answer on the other question, too. We have tied up the requirements for CDBG for two years of financial audits to make sure they're not just doing QuickBooks and giving us a financial statement. So there's a lot more emphasis on the financial audit. So we actually gone, I guess we screened down a few agencies that more mom and pop who may not qualify for federal funds, but those are highly at-risk agencies. So, to answer the other part of the question, we are seeing more agencies that provide poverty-type programs, more emphasis on homelessness and homeless prevention, providing basic skills, ESL, job training. Those have been the more priority agencies that we've been seeing the last few years in the trend. There are bigger agencies as well, such as Salvation Army, Catholic Charities, the Essentias. So there is that part where we do not always get the smaller nonprofits. Doesn't mean we don't. We've had, in the case, a few agencies who are very small, and in fact, we do have one now that does get federal funds.
Second one may be a question unanswered today. Given that the federal budget as proposed by the executive branch seems to be having some rather draconian cuts in certain areas, is there any sense of the HUD funding for these types of programs? Are they more in a safe harbor, or we don't really know yet?
That's a good question. If I'll get in specifics, in fiscal 2018, the CDBG program is, it will not receive funds according to the current White House budget. Of course, that's not the congressional intent right now, so we expect to have some, some funds for next year, but certainly the administration is looking for funds to use for other purposes right now for other priorities. So it is, it is a program that's in a little bit of a situation we're not sure of, but we're hopeful, we're optimistic that it's going to be funded, as is a program that's well-liked by both parties.
So we hope, we hope it'll be funded and we get through limbo without any problems.
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
One more question. These ratios you have here, during the selection criteria, you know, meeting with the committee, do you guys have a threshold, like if they exceed the defensitural percentage or the debt ratio, if it's over a certain amount, we're not going to fund them, or do you look at that in any way?
With the committee, we don't. At staff, we do take a look. I take, I take a review of this, and sometimes I have questions, I'll check with staff. So I look at if, if the ratios are getting really high and we're a little concerned, we'll go a little deeper into it. Sometimes it's because of a debt of a building, sometimes it's loss of funding. So from staff, if there's something very significant, we'll bring it up to the agencies and their, what we do is a financial review, we do a review of their proposals. So it may come up. Luckily, we haven't had too much of a swing from one year to the other on some of the ratios.
Out of all these, which of these organizations you have here, which ones were, you could say borderline of not actually getting funding just because of the ratios? And I'm asking just because of the ratios, I mean, I could see them where, you know, GYA, for example, ratios are different compared to the Armenian Relief Society, or the housing rights, where it's a defense interval month of eight months almost, where GYA only has one, 1.27, which is very low compared to the other ones. So they could survive for a long period of time without the funding from the city of Glendale compared to GYA, right?
Yes. And again, if we look at them, and we ask those questions, sometimes it's a matter of fact that in this case, it would have been count receivable. So what's happening? Well, we didn't get our, our funds reimbursed yet from, from workforce. So some of it is good questions, is that those are things that we look at as wise. It's so low, well, it's our count receivable that's pending. Or in cases, the fence, again, defensive ratios or other type of ratios we're looking at, there may be a debt applied to a building, that they have a building that's showing the debt ratio very high. So those are, those are very good questions, and also something we look into, we work with the agencies. Again, we have questions, we'll look with staff, internal audit staff, and that helps quite a bit.
I just had a quick question. Is there any reason why the city cannot ask the applicants to, you know, calculate the six ratios and then submit it along with their financial statements? Is that, like, and then if there's any questions, you can, subsequent to, you know, looking at the data, you can ask them?
Well, that's a good question. We haven't asked them. We know that just getting the application in time for them is very challenging. It's always at the last minute. Again, we're working with agencies that certainly do have accounting, they do have staff to do this, but it is a little bit more burdensome for them to, to get to the application process, give us the financial statements, and then adding an extra, an extra review. We kind of like it, we do it, we have a better eye for it. We may see mistakes from them, but I believe our staff is better utilized in doing that outside review of the statements.
Yeah, and then, and just correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong, but in my experience, a lot of these organizations are smaller not-for-profits, or, you know, cooked into a department in a government agency, and so, you know, we're not talking about businesses that are run for profit. And so the realities of that, I imagine, these, these ratios are helpful for the CDBG members to make a, a decision on, on the whole.
Right. Yes, that's correct.
Great. Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Corel.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so, moving on to the second topic, the projects that are currently in progress. We actually have quite a few projects that are currently in progress, a total of seven of them. Three of the seven projects, we have already prepared the draft report, and it's, they're currently being reviewed and finalized. So we're expecting these three will be issued by next quarter, if not sooner. So these three are the Faster Fleet Asset Management System Audit, the Marketplace, and the Record Management. So in addition to these three, we've also have three projects that are on track to be completed before June. Those three are the Election Defined Procedure, Police Hiring and Background Process, and Magnolia Project Audit. So, overall, we're hoping that six of the seven projects will be completed by the end of next quarter. So any questions on the projects that are currently in progress?
I have a question. Regarding the hiring and background process for the police department, you know, these, these type of, I like some of these performance-type audits, and I did have a question. So, the audit is stated as evaluating for efficiency and effectiveness, which is wonderful. Does that include looking at the fairness of the hiring and background process?
Um...
It's a good question.
It's a very good question.
I don't think it does.
We... If I could just comment, that would be more of a subjective review, and so, when of that, maybe, maybe you can ask the question differently, but if, what's fair to one person may not be fair to another. So the, I would say, if you're looking at a different type of an evaluation of the process, then perhaps you could ask that way.
Uh, okay. I mean fairness as regard, in regards to, in regards to the manner in which, well, that's a, that's a fair point. I, I would say fairness in regards to the manner in which the, the applicants are considered in terms of, you know, the, kind of the demographic realities of our, of our city, you know, I'm, I know that there are potentials for issues in terms of our police department and our fire department reflecting the demographics of the city and wanting applicants that are reflective of, you know, the city of Glendale. So the, the question in terms of fairness would be, would be regarding that aspect. If there's any view of how those applications are considered when it comes to that, that aspect.
And I think your question now is, is there an evaluation of the process that would reflect the, the demographic makeup of, of the hiring? I think that's the question. Are there any, does the audit consider any criteria that would evaluate the demographic makeup of applicants?
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, no, that, that's helpful. Thank you for clarifying that.
So it's a matter of diversity?
I don't know if it's a matter of diversity, and, and, you know, I, I should probably think this out a little bit more as well, because in terms of, in terms of...
Yes, we could probably answer.
That, you know, I know that there are limited amount of spots, and it's extremely competitive. And so, especially when we're dealing with safety, you know, such as police and fire, I know that, I've, I've seen how these processes can weed out certain types of applicants because of very strict concerns, and then that, in turn, can turn into not reflecting our, you know, city's kind of diversity in terms of applicants. And I don't even know if that's really an issue with the police department or the fire department here in Glendale. It's just a question that I had.
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the Audit Committee, Yasmin Beers, Assistant City Manager.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. It's a very in-depth, I think, question and conversation as it relates to whether it's safety or the organization as a whole, as it relates to being a microcosm of the community ultimately. And I think if you look at our demographics as it relates to the number of folks that we have from different backgrounds within this organization through the years, that reflection, I think, has, has changed quite a bit in the last 15 years or so. And we used to do a demographic report every couple of years, and it was done, actually, through the Audit Department, and we haven't updated that for some time. And interestingly, we were talking about it about a month ago in terms of updating that information. But specifically with safety, as you speak about that, and interestingly, the fire department, less so diverse than the police department, and our new chief, at the time when he first came on, Greg Fish, looked at our testing process and putting aside kind of the backgrounds. It's the actual testing of who's coming in and how are they able to test and come in. And in looking at the test itself, they were able to make some changes to the test so that the reflection of the community could be better suited for this organization in terms of the types of questions that were asked and how the testing was done. And so, separate again, and apart from evaluation and backgrounds, how do you get folks in? How do you go out there and get the information out to have the appropriate folks kind of apply for the positions within the organization and, and have them be successful ultimately in becoming, whether it's a police officer or a firefighter in the organization? And so in this last recruit academy, you saw that reflection quite differently than you have in the past in the fire department. You had more women who passed the test, and you had more folks from other backgrounds, such as Armenians, which we've been looking for, for the fire department for some time, so that when they are going out to the community, they're able to provide the services to folks who are in, in need of those services. And so when you, when you step back and look at it, it's really, how do you get folks in? So it's really the testing process. We do have bilingual tests that we also do for different languages, whether it's Korean, Armenian, Spanish. We do that quite a bit in the police department, and I think that's why through the years you've seen that, that happen as well. And so there are a number of areas that we look at, but as it relates to the backgrounds, that's not an area, as Ms. Farah Petian was, was stating, that's not an area where, at that point, we should have already had the folks in to be able to have that reflection of the community, and so...
And I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think the, the, you know, your mentioning of female applicants as well, and that, that balance between men and women. So, you know, hypothetically speaking, if the testing process, you know, requires some sort of physical test, and, you know, that physical test has, you know, arbitrary movements, you know, so it, it very, it very quietly weeds out certain types of applicants. For example, if you have, you know, a, a test that requires a certain physical capacity, and that physical capacity isn't evaluated to, to really even it out between men and women, for example, be it, you know, pull-ups, something very basic. But it has a very... But it has a very profound impact on, on the testing process. So, you know, in terms of fairness, you know, and I appreciate, I appreciate your trying to clarify my, my thoughts as I, as I kind of spoke them out, out loud, but that, that helps quite a bit.
And in no way, you know, in, in terms of, again, with safety, we're not reducing our requirements as it relates to being able to do the job. I mean, that's very important to, to mention. However, how you're asking those questions and evaluating pieces of it is really important. And so in no way is, is, you know, someone who's being hired going to be less qualified based on the change in the test because oftentimes people will mistake that for, well, you're lowering your standards to be able to get more possibly women into the department or, you know, whatever that blank is. And that's never been the case. Safety is the utmost importance for our employees, but as well for the community as well. So when they do make that call, you've got the right folks showing up to, to provide the services, so.
Is there any, excuse me, is there any outreach in addition to the veterans' community? When you've just come out of the service, you are probably at the best physical state you're ever going to be. I don't know how I feel meeting my Air Force dischargeee from the Vietnam War. Now I'd go, why, what a marvelously healthy young man. What happened? So I was just curious if there's a veteran component that's been added more recently since that's been an uptick in perception?
Yes, through the Human Resources Department, there's absolutely that outreach. And, and whenever we have, you know, any sort of job fair, or there are job fairs for us to be present at as well as online presence with many organizations, that occurs across the board for all positions, but in particular for safety, just based on the qualifications that are needed.
Thank you.
And, and just to, you know, kind of further develop and clarify what, what my question was about. The, I, I know that in these processes, there are a lot of sort of, there's kind of a hidden curriculum, as it were, in terms of, you know, applicants understanding the process and what's being evaluated as well. And that can have a profound impact on, on how questions are answered, you know, not, not really changing the, not really changing the, the worthiness of the applicant, but just the manner in which they go through the process and their understanding of what is being tested, what, why the questions are being asked. So, you know, I, I'm just wondering, I was just wondering about that clarity in terms of, in terms of how that, that process is, is being put forth, given some of the real considerations about, you know, wanting our, our government, wanting our police and our fire to reflect our city's, you know, demographics, both from, you know, a male and female standpoint and from just our, all demographics, basically.
I mean, hiring is, is not an easy thing to do and that spectrum, I think, as it relates to being able to touch folks at a young age, hopefully, to get them interested in public service. We have so many different programs that are in place for all departments, but really specifically with, again, police and fire, where we have academies in high schools. We have every single child being touched by, you know, fire personnel. I forget the grade, but it's some in middle school, I believe. And then we have the cadet program as well, on both police and, and fireside, where you're able to hire, you know, 15 to 20 young adults who are interested in the field, who will then get kind of the perspective, that's more of an internal perspective of what those questions may be, how to better prepare themselves for the academy as well as the oral presentation that they have to make. We have volunteer opportunities, we have internship opportunities. We have the ability to be on, on social media. It is such a powerful tool for us in terms of being able to get out there and get information out and being, again, present in the community and available. I have to tell you, I mean, our organization with our chiefs as well as the folks who work for them, the amount of time that they spend in the community with different organizations to make sure that it's not just the schools, but it's the churches, it's any sort of service organizations. Anybody who would invite us, you know, out will be there to have that conversation and have that ability to, to touch folks. But again, it starts typically for us, we find at a younger age. When we're able to capture those folks at a young age and kind of carry them through a bit and have that one-on-one, they tend to be much more successful. Our AO program in the fire department, ambulance operator program, has been very successful. Unfortunately, we tend to lose a whole lot of folks in that program to other jurisdictions because we are preparing them so well. But when we need them also, we have that percentage here in-house to be able to hire them. Because it is a complicated process, if someone's just coming out from, you know, fresh without any sort of knowledge, it is, you know, it's, it's a little more difficult for them to kind of maneuver their way through the entire process and, and be successful. So again, anybody who might be interested in is watching today. You know, you can always make a call to HR, any one of our chiefs, my office. And, and the most fun that I have in the job that I do is when folks do reach out and, and want to learn more about the process and, and we love to share that information with folks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, moving on to the third topic for this report, quarterly follow-up. As of March 31st, there were a total of 14 audit issues reported. Of the 14 audit issues, three were implemented and 11 remain outstanding. These 14 audit issues are from four different audits and four different departments. So for the past quarter, there's no outstanding priority one audit issue reported. And also there's no audit issue meeting discussion criteria outlined in resolution number two. So these criterias, if you have that handout, you can see under outstanding audit issue meeting discussion criteria. Basically, there's no audit issues that were, was determined to be not implemented and there were no audit issues have not been implemented within two years or three years of the report issuance date. So none of those. We don't have any audit issues meeting those criteria. So that's a quick update on the quarterly follow-up. If you have any questions, we'll move on to the next.
No, no questions. Any questions?
I have one for the election defined procedures. We just had one, April 4th. Is, will that be reported to us by the next meeting?
Yes, that one will be, that's one of the three that on track to be completed. So I'm hoping, we probably will issue the report sometime in May. And you, of course, you will receive the report and in our next audit committee meeting, we'll report back to you.
To that end, I'm wondering, based on the description here, it seems like the answer is no, but I'll ask the question anyways. Does the election defined procedures audit have any sort of financial impact? Data, it says here, it's just compliance, or not just, but it is, the, the purpose of the report is to comply with the California election code. But is there any mention of the financial impact of the way in which Glendale's doing their elections and/or when they're scheduling the elections? And/or is there previous, are there previous audits that have been conducted on this topic that may be referenced in this report?
This, the election defined procedure is a, a limited set of procedures that will be performed based on our discussion with Speaker's office. So for this year, that will be our focus on, it's focused on the, to provide a oversight and also to primarily be there and observe the process for, for example, separating or duplicating and get the ballot ready to be counted. So that will be the focus of this, this election defined procedure audit.
And I'm, I'm not sure I understood the question. So regarding what financial impact?
So, there's a financial impact. When you schedule elections, when you schedule elections matters and it has financial impacts. When you schedule elections that are what I would call standalone, meaning that they're not conducted in conjunction with other elections. So for example, not conducted in conjunction with, say, state of California races, federal races, et cetera, they become what I would call standalone, meaning that they're not folded in, right?
So the question, the question then was whether that, the, the timing of the election, does this audit particularly look at whether the timing of the audit had a financial impact?
Well, I can answer that. The answer is no.
Right.
It does not impact. It's, it's, the, the dates are set by code charter. We, you know, it has nothing to do with this. It's just really the ballot counting process and make sure that, that everything is done according to which.
Which was my, that was, that was my conclusion, but I just wanted to make sure that my conclusion was correct. And, and that sets a stage for, for the next question, which was, has the audit that I'm interested in, looking at, you know, the, the financial impacts of having our elections when we have them versus having them in concert with, with other elections? Has, has that question ever been examined or, or looked at? And if not, I would say it would be something that we may want to propose and or consider.
Well, I, I can answer part of that and Ms. Beers can probably follow up. We've had, since I've been here almost nine years, we've had a discussion just about every year on when we have elections because there is a significant cost. We have to hire an outside firm to handle all the ballot mailing. So there's a significant cost to the city. That said, if you combine an election either with the county, through the county when the state has it or national election, there still is a sizable cost that we pay the county. So I'm not sure there's, there's a huge savings one way or the other. You know, in terms of results and when we get them, I would have to defer to the city clerk's office, but it is a topic of discussion. The, the question also then begs is, you know, one to the office holders of our city council, if you move the election, do we have a two-month election if you want to coincide with June elections? It opens up a whole host of other issues that I don't think we have answers as to yet.
And, and I think this is something that we can discuss when we determine what the audit universe is. And, you know, in, in regards to this specific item, I, I think the question's been answered, so we can, we can move on. Any other questions?
One question. This time, we had the election center over at the police station. We had city staff used, which meant either release time or something because they were working on the weekend. And we had the excellent outreach of having the ability to go in on Saturday or Sunday all day long to drop off your ballots. So that, that would allow people who may be on the road early and get home late and reaching a polling place between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM is not as easy as it sounds if you have any distance to be going to your job. I was curious if this audit looks at that, and I was secondarily curious, given that you'd like more people to vote. Do we ever do anything which is a per capita, which says we may have spent X dollars more to make this outreach on the weekend before Election Day, but we also got X thousands more voters, which might mean a per capita cost of less per voter? And I don't know if that's something that is within this audit or if this is something that we should address somewhere else.
That question was not in the scope of this audit at all. Again, this, this was really just compliance with, with the policies and procedures that are in place as we hold the election. The effectiveness and, and of the center being open on Saturday, Sunday and accepting walk-ins and all that, I, I couldn't speak to that. That would be a question for the city clerk.
Thank you.
So, moving on to our last topic is team assignment. So there, there are three teams that Eileen was assigned to. However, after she left, assignment is currently on hold. We have the director and assistant director from finance currently participating in those team assignments. So internal audit involvement is on a, as needed basis until we make assignment on those teams.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item number seven.
Number seven is audit committee or staff comments.
Okay, no comments. Item eight?
Is new business.
I see no new business.
I'll, I want to talk about this one. There's nothing in our agenda today to talk about the recent news that came out, obviously from the Glendale where there was the issue in regards to the, the funds of the water and power that the city of Glendale has to pay millions of dollars of. You guys have any plans, because obviously this happened back in, before our time, but any plans of us having some discussion on that in the future?
I don't think so. That's not a, it's just a legal issue at this point. To, to, a little bit of a recap, two agencies, IBW and the Glendale Coalition for a Better Glendale sued the city independently. The lawsuit was joined. The judge, preliminary rule, or the final ruling at the, the local level was that the city general fund transfer, which has been in place since the 1930s, was contrary to Prop 26. Our outside counsel feels differently and I think the appeal is under process of, of going forward. So that's pretty much that in a nutshell.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we would audit, what we would request to audit.
I can tell you, it's a huge amount to the general fund. It's 20, 20, $21 million a year in general fund resources. It would be a tremendous hit to the general fund if we were to lose that revenue source. And again, that's been in, in place, you know, since the 30s voted on a number of times by, by the citizens of Glendale. So we feel pretty confident about it, but that'll be up to the courts to decide.
Okay, thank you very much. Item number nine?
Is adjournment.
Motion?
Move.
We are adjourned.